Of course, is marijuana hospitality establishments. And as everyone, I'm sure on council probably knows, maybe Mr. DeBono, I'm not sure if you know it or not, but we do currently have a moratorium on the establishments that we put into place some time back when the state of Colorado legalized the ability to have hospitality rooms in a community and we were given the opportunity to opt out, which we did. And we can opt back in if that's the way council wants to go forward at some point in time. Mr. Downs has provided us with a draft ordinance that hopefully everyone has had an opportunity to review. And Mr. Downs, I guess what we're looking for tonight is mostly just conversation on this, about the draft ordinance or any issues that we can see. I don't think... Are we looking for a consensus to move forward with this at this tonight? Or we're going to just have conversation? And the consensus could be either two or not to bring it forward? And then if it's brought forth as a first reading, is that what you're looking for?
Sorry, Mayor. Um, yes, that is, that is what we're looking for. And I'm, um, I am wanting to just kind of give you guys a little bit of background if I can please, and let you know what we have here. And I, um, and again, thank you, Mayor, council members. I want to say that the attached materials, first of all, uh, first of all, you have a map. And that map indicates a thousand feet from HTA. I'll, I'll get to that in a second, but that's what that map indicates. Um, and then you also, you have all of the law on this subject. The state of Colorado uses it in essence, in that you have the ordinances from the three municipalities that have hospitality clubs, or, is that called consumption clubs? I'll get to that in a sec. You also have the two state statutes. Um, council, the, the council members who've been on for a while will recall, we were talking about, I think it was a, a House bill sometime ago when this legislation was initially introduced. Then it was going through the legislature. I don't think it was a Senate bill, I think it originated in the House. Anyway, the two statutes I have given, forty-four ten six oh nine and forty-four ten six ten C O S, are the two statutes on point that that, that House bill would take. Uh, six oh nine is on hospitality clubs without sales. Um, and six ten is hospitality clubs with sales. And I would like to say too, as I begin this, that I tend to use the term consumption club synonymously with hospitality club. And I mean, none of them is more descriptive in terms of what would be going on, what does go on in these facilities. But it's also how Denver and Colorado Springs captured their ordinances. They call what they have consumption clubs, not hospitality clubs. But anyway, if you get confused, please understand that I just tend to call them consumption clubs because that, that is what's going on. Now, as you can tell, the two main types are consumption clubs where the sale of marijuana does not occur. There's consumption clubs only. Or consumption clubs where the sale of marijuana does occur, but only an amount that a person can consume on premises. No one can buy more than that in a, in a hospitality or consumption club with sales. You can only buy the amount that is designed for on-premises consumption. Um, so there, there are really, just so you can kind of think about this and get kind of a clearer picture, because I've, this is kind of crystallizing my mind as I, I've been thinking about it. There are really two kinds of consumption clubs without sales. The first one would be if you had a, an existing business and that did not have a liquor license, but an existing business where people wanted to legally consume marijuana. Let's say you had a tea slash coffee shop. And that existing business decided that they wanted to have an area where people could come in. They would be bringing their own, because that's what you do in a consumption club or hospitality club. Without sales, you bring your own in for consumption. And they would go in and have an area where they can consume marijuana. Now, that's one type. And then, and another type, like, let's say you have a hotel in town where they want to have an area designated for where people can go and consume marijuana. Uh, my sense is that there are places like that that do that now. But of course, they're not allowable. They're not legit. And they could get in trouble for doing what they're doing. So anybody who, let's say I have a hotel and people are consuming marijuana there. I could go to the city and get a consumption license without sales and have an area where people can consume marijuana at my hotel. They're bringing their own. I'm not selling any amount. They're simply coming in and consuming marijuana. So the two types of consumption or hospitality licenses are facilities without sales. Well, I, so the first one is an existing business, tea room, coffee shop, um, uh, or a hotel. The other one would be a freestanding building. Like you just have a place, you, you decided you want to have a place where people can come together and consume marijuana. And, and they're not going to sell. They're just going to have a place where they can consume. So that is another, that is the second type of consumption club. Now, I have had to leave alone how people are going to make money off of this. I don't know how they would. They consume, charge, they don't charge. I'm leaving that alone. Okay, for a long time, I asked that question, but that's not for, for me to really ask because people want to do this even if they're not making money. Now, moving on to hospitality or consumption clubs with sales. Now, this is, and if you had a chance to look at the ordinances, this is a new license type. That is, it is a manner in which people can sell marijuana, small amounts of marijuana. This is what the state of Colorado is allowed with this. Where people come in and they buy marijuana and consume on the premises. And you, so, so just two points, and I will kind of bring this to a conclusion in a few moments. I think the way that people envisioned that happening when they first talked about this was if people had a retail marijuana store, but they had a space next door, okay? You would have to have complete separation from the store. But you have a space next door walled off, and that is a place where they could provide small amounts of their product for people to come in and consume it, these small amounts. That's why some places call these things tasting rooms or, or sampling rooms. Because that way, that marijuana facility, that store could provide them with marijuana. So, so that is kind of one model, that is, an existing business, retail marijuana store, where it would be easy for them to have a space right next door that they would supply with their product. Okay, that's just an example. The, the other one is, is a freestanding marijuana consumption facility um, that, that has sales. And it does not have to be, I, I don't want to confuse things. It does not have to be associated with an existing marijuana facility. It simply doesn't. This license type would allow people to go, you know, a person that has this license, to go purchase products for consumption in their facility. And so, I don't want you to think again that you have to have some other kind of marijuana license. That you have to have any other kind of marijuana license in order to do this. You don't. And so, those are, you have the two main categories. Those are kind of the four subcategories that I envision. And just in the retail marijuana store with a separate space for a consumption license with sales, I, I suppose you could have another existing business, like my earlier example, the tea shop or the hotel also, that could get a marijuana consumption license with sales. But, but again, I think just the way people thought about it mentally is kind of attaching to an existing retail marijuana store. So, I want to tell you just a couple of things. Colorado Springs has a consumption, um, has, has a consumption-only ordinance. All you can do, you, you don't buy in your consumption facility in Colorado Springs. Denver is the same way. And I think that's why they captured their ordinances again as consumption ordinances. Denver calls it a consumption pilot program. Colorado Springs simply consumption. The only place where you have a, 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 uh, a marijuana consumption facility with sales is in Glendale. And my understanding is there is one of them, and only one. And so, nobody else has really, you know, jumped into this whole thing in terms of the consumption facility with sales. Now, I, I'm about done, and I, I know you have many questions. I'm sorry for talking so long. But those are things that even if they didn't register with you, I, I, I felt I need to say. The last thing is, are, is this proposed draft ordinance kind of goes into our existing marijuana code? That's why we also have a copy of the existing Trinidad marijuana code. And that is, all the C P provisions, all the zoning provisions, all the requirements for a marijuana license that exist in the current code would apply to this as well. And I wanted to say, this map, to get back to this. You can have a marijuana facility in the H P zoning, things like that. But what is ideal, Mayor, is you can't have a marijuana facility within a thousand feet of an existing or established school. And that's why, that's why we have this. And that thousand-foot radius in the attached map basically eliminates all of the H P. Um, because that is a thousand feet from HTA. So, I'm sure there are things I can say that are a bit wet, but I'm, I'm going to have to, yeah, I will ask questions.
Still with Mr. Goodall.
What I always envisioned if we decided to have this was, what I thought we would be able to control the best would be a place with sales, because if you have people bringing in, um, you have no control over the amount of product that people are consuming. I like better an ideal where it is to be sold. Uh, and that's how they would generate their revenue. I think it would be a good ideal to reach out to the marijuana businesses in town to see if anybody would even be interested in doing this and possibly asking for some sort of business plan, how they would make this work so we could get an ideal, what someone was looking to do. Um, we have all the power to write whatever, uh, rules we wanted this as far as ventilation and everything else. Uh, we know, if anyone's been to Vegas and with the lack of smell of cigarettes, I mean, we can get a ventilation system that's required that will remove ninety-plus percent of all odors and everything, all the smoke out of the rooms. But I like, I like the ideal of places with sales with a very small percentage of the people if we were going to do this, not to carry in smoke, whatever they're bringing in.
Right. And Councilman Goodall, if I can please merely respond to that. I would say, I told that if you allow it or you, you license it, they are out there and they will come forward. If Mr. Wallace is still on, he knows a number of people that are very interested. And I think these people, and I, I was going to do that and say, let's have marijuana, you know, people come forward. And then it was kind of like a chicken versus the egg kind of thing. And people were like, look, you gotta do your ordinance, man, and we'll, we'll try and. And I think everybody was kind of tired of hearing me say, well, we'll be, I'll get important things to do. But I mean, so, so I think this draft ordinance, um, is, you know, a lot of what we need. But I, I just want to tell you, they are out there. And I am assured that if you do, you know, adopt an ordinance with respect to this, that people are going to be coming forward. We already defined facilities now in, in anticipation to do this.
So legally, we could say we are going to start, if we do a pilot program, one store, just do a lottery. Can we just have business plans submitted and, and the best plan? Or, or how would we be limited in that sense?
A lottery would be completely random. And a lottery would be just, uh, you don't even look at the merit side. So it would be hard. We can do it, I know there are a number of these counties and counties. We could assign a point value to, um, applications. Or we'd have to do it, of course, in advance and say, well, we're looking forward to make it objective and not look like we were, uh, like favoritism. But I do want to tell you that it is, very able staff reminds me, uh, frequently, when we had a limited number on, you know, medical marijuana, retail marijuana, when we had a limited number, we had people lining up, you know, beginning in the middle of the night, starting, starting to line up and sit at all doors in anticipation for being the first ones to apply. And they're, you know, and, and that was, that was tough. So, and, and also, I do want to say that the, the numbers I put in here, the half dozen of each, those are completely random, totally arbitrary discussion point for all of you. But, um, I would just say, it is kind of more workable and just, it, it, it just makes more sense if you set a, a set number of these kinds of facilities if you're going to allow them. So say, four or six consumption without sales, if you're only going to do that. Or if you're only going to do consumption with sales, say two or four, um, something like that. So people, and then set a date. And then we would have criteria for, uh, being able to exclude too many applications that get more than four by a, a certain date set for receiving applications. All right. That's all I have.
Ms. Ogletree.
I, I spent a lot of time going through all of this today and probably have, um, feedback that's a little too detailed and granular from what you're looking for. I had some kind of general questions, um, about the, the way that it's set up. Um, and just, I'll try to make that, uh, a cohesive thing, because I know that we're all getting tired here. Um, one thing is, just in terms of definitions, um, in the, in the ordinance, it seems like we're including both the with sales and without sales as the defined retail marijuana establishment. And that doesn't seem to make sense to me because I don't sense that this is a... And non-sale wouldn't, wouldn't be necessarily a, a retail, um, type of establishment. So that might be a little confusing in terms of terms, but that is probably too detailed. Um, uh, the, the proposed, um, sec-, uh, city code section fourteen two eleven dash one. I just want to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying. Is you're proposing six of each as, uh, as the total, and that would be a total of twelve of these, right? Les?
Well, that was, that was absolutely a random number. We had to have a number to plug in there. And I, I have not, and I think those staff members are not suggesting a number of you. Um, we just wanted to insert a number as a discussion point. I'm, I'm not...
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and then coming back to what you started this with in terms of our moratorium. Would we have to, um, undo the moratorium to allow for the places that will allow sales? Or is it just a whole different kind of?
This would essentially, uh, uh, excuse me, it would, um, it, it would take the place of the moratorium. We may add language, um, and, and I, I would defer to Ogden on this, but we may add language. And, but, but our moratorium ordinance says, unless and until the city of Trinidad takes action with regard, the moratorium is in place. So my, my, um, my understanding is that this, once we plugged it in, the moratorium would no longer have any, any, any force or effect because we would have this ordinance now.
Okay, um, let's see here. Um, you don't have any kind of proposal for a fee structure for this in this proposal, uh, in our, what? City code fourteen dash four, two fourteen, we have fees for the other ones. We don't have that fee. I doubt you should probably think about that. Um, uh, also, um, Trinidad's city code fourteen two fifteen, we get, I believe that if we have a, a, you know, we, we have to dummy that, as we all have to have done that. Um, and then in fourteen two twenty, I, I would want you to look at whether or not we would need more, stronger language with regard to the city's liability and indemnification uh, because of sanctioning use, um, in the city. That may be something we should look at. Um, I looked at the three different ones that you provided to us too, and I see that some of them don't permit violation of the Colorado Clean and Air Act. Some do. And so, I don't know if you had any idea of whether or not we would be allowing that? Or what would be worrying about that?
Um, there are a number of items that would need to be filled in and addressed if you were going to decide to go forward, um, with respect to this ordinance.
So that, so that's, I'm kind of getting beyond where you want us to focus on the question.
Well, I don't want to tell you that. I mean, it's, uh, it's a little, a little, um, you know, it's a little detailed. And I, and, and it's confusing to me too, because it seems like the, uh, in Clean Indoor Air Act always applies, but there are exceptions and I, um, but, but a filtration system is required in our condition of use and prohibited application process. And I think that we would probably, if necessary, would add to that. Um, if, if, again, necessary for the, uh, the smoking. We also obviously wouldn't want it to be discernible from outside. We wouldn't want it to be over outside facilities. So, uh, but, but there are a lot of requirements in terms of conditions for, requirements for marijuana facilities.
I think in, we can't tell whether it was Colorado Springs or Denver, it seemed like they also allowed them outdoors. Are we thinking of outdoors at all for, um, hospitality businesses?
That would be fine, um, as long as it was in a confined area and it's not visible, uh, from, it's, it's out of the public's view. Uh, public consumption is a, is a, is illegal, and so you would have to be out of the public view.
Okay. Yeah, as far as, uh, would you think we would be asking for? I liked Denver's, um, idea of an operations plan, that the people had to explain how they were going, going to address, um, things like how no underage, uh, people would be allowed in, what kind of training they'd be providing, um, that no smell of cannabis would be, um, uh, to a, 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 a reasonable or a standard kind of person outside indoor designated area. And I kind of liked those things that they had in there. Um, so I, I think we do have to sort out a lot of these other kinds of things. The biggest issues that people have brought up with me when they talk about this is concern about air quality, um, concern about, um, it being available to young people or somehow normalizing marijuana use to, to young people because they might see or smell it in public. Um, I, I think that's kind of the, the objections that I heard. Um, my, my biggest question and concern about is that we don't have places that people who come here, uh, to purchase marijuana, for them to use it legally, unless they have a private place, private home that they can go into where they're permitted to do it. And I, as far as I can tell, there isn't any place for them to do it legally safely. And that's a concern to me.
And I thank you for those, uh, those questions, those, you know, I will tell you, they're convenient. I mean, it, it is a, uh, one of our obligations with enforcement for any facilities, alcohol, marijuana, any of those things to ensure that minors are not allowed to, uh, partake or purchase or do anything like that. And, uh, these places, of course, want the risk of losing their licenses if, if minor does that. But a number of other points, we could just talk about those things later, if that's okay.
Yeah, sure. That's what I have for now.
Ms. Gregor.
So, basically, Les, you're just providing us, you're giving us the, the foundation of what we're working at. You just want an idea of our, if we are in favor of or opposed to the, uh, bringing this idea of hospitality, of this cannabis business into, to the, to the city. Is that right?
In part, yes. I mean, that, that is doing the importance if, uh, if any, the majority of you were wanting to, to bring this forward. But also, I want to give you the, the framework for in ordnance if you guys are going to move forward on this. I mean, this, uh, this was a lot of work. And we have a chance, maybe it's in summer, and I, but this is, this would be, you know, it may not look exactly like this, but this would be Trinidad's ordinance on, on consumption clubs if you guys decide to go forward with it. With other matters being addressed, I don't want to finish it on, not saying that. But, but yes, that is absolutely a part of this, is to find out if council is wanting to move this forward.
Well, it's, it's my understanding some council people have gotten, uh, phone calls in opposition. I only got one. And I'm right, I have to make a few observations here. Um, and I'm sorry if I'm taking time. I know we're tired. But I think it's very important for me to stress some factors here, and you can cut me off if you want to. I'm right here in the middle of, uh, of the four hundred block of Commercial Street. In the time that marijuana has been on Commercial Street, the only, uh, complaint I've got is the traffic. And I have had no vandalism. I've had no problems with the building. I've had no problems with people coming in here that were high or disorderly. I have had none of that. Um, I think marijuana is a good business. I mean, they're, they've been so responsible and they've been good neighbors. They've been good businesses for the city of Trinidad. I loved it. Just look at what we looked at tonight on our budget. What would we be without that one point one million dollars? You know, last year, I remember, we had to use some of the marijuana money to balance our budget. We're not like the United States government, where they could just post in money whether they have it or not. We have, we have to have a balanced budget. And the marijuana industry has actually done that for us here in Trinidad. And I'm sorry if I'm sounding like I'm on a soapbox, but I am because I dearly love this community. There is nothing that I would do that I would say would intentionally, uh, hurt this community. Um, I seen it firsthand, and carefully, at the beginning, I was really yippy about the pot. Um I seen it firsthand, and carefully, at the beginning, I was really yippy about the pot. I didn't know whether it it was the right move, but after the experience of what we've we've seen in Trinidad, um I think it's it's a very good business, and I have I have no qualms about the hospitality or consumption clubs. I will give you a lasting, um like I said, my business is on the three hundred block in Marson, Commercial. And before marijuana came in, I was really concerned. It was like seeing a tree, that the roots were starting to die. And the root I'm talking about is Commercial Street. It was making me sick to see the um what was happening physically to the street. Nobody was going down there, the buildings were in disrepair, and now I see thriving businesses down there. We've got a Toyota dealership that had no qualms about keeping their business right smack and closer to the pop business than I am. And that that to me is a a definite plus. And what I see that's very, you know, I think some of the people that are opposed to marijuana, and maybe I'm getting off the subject too, but there are stereotypes of marijuana users that's not there anymore. It's amazing to me, and I've said it many, many times, the people that walk from shops down on the four hundred block up to Main Street, you you could not pick out the marijuana customers from the Randar Avenue strip. I mean, it evolved, and we had this cross section of our supply. And I, you know, I've never seen it be done well, and that's why we pay to be done. She's gotta come up with a new show. I I have no time.
Mr. De Bonner.
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, you can do it.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Now we can. You can answer this for me, and do you have any information on who monitors these consumption slash hospitality rooms?
Well, the MED is largely responsible for marijuana enforcement. Uh a a city like Denver that has such considerable resources, they may they may do that also, but uh but MED is largely responsible for for enforcement of marijuana facilities.
So there's not a a private security service that non-local police department type of situation where the security services can monitor that?
There is no private security firm that's been hired by the city or marijuana facilities, no.
Okay, and the legalities and liabilities after people leave the establishment?
They are the same as um trade shop acts pertaining to alcohol. And that is, people are um you know, people are required to um to not be impaired to such an extent that they can't safely operate a motor vehicle.
And Amanda, when I guess you answered about the, it could be a compliance with state regulations?
Um yes, I, people who apply have to be in compliance with state regulations, that's correct. Or operators, if they're allowed to uh to get a license and operate a business at this time.
Okay. That's it.
Thank you.
Mr. Shu.
So I I I'm definitely opposed to it, I'm not, uh I don't think it's a good idea for Trinidad. Uh the marijuana sales are good, people are coming here buying them, usually taking them home. I just don't think we should have the responsibility of having a place like this. Um well, you know, it's just, uh we we back up uh committees that are drug free and stuff. It's kind of a slap in the face to them if we vote this in, and uh you know, it puts a strain on our police department. And uh just to make it simple, I'm just definitely opposed to it.
Mr. Williamson.
I had a question, um do the marijuana um operators that are currently um selling goods, do they have the same responsibility to have um to not be able to detect the odor outside of their facility? I mean, there's a simple, you know, walk up and down right now, a lot of those shops have pretty strong odors. I was wondering if that's a requirement currently?
It is a requirement, they are required to have a filtration system, especially the cultivation facilities. But uh but retail marijuana stores are uh are supposed to have a filtration system also.
So um if if this is off topic, I apologize, if if that's the case, why is the smell of marijuana so prevalent um up and down the streets?
I don't, I don't know.
May I? May I?
Go ahead.
Yeah, you may.
Well, so planning and zoning, when they come to us, set the guidelines of what we required. And so we set a guideline on backflow preventers, doubled up to make sure nothing flooded back. Um the air filtration systems that were required, what was available on the market at the time, and so forth. So they put in what was required, and that's why I would say it's an important fact to remember. Technologies advance, and when we write the rules, we can make them much stricter, when especially compared to what we see didn't work as well in the grow areas for the smell that is coming out of the buildings. We can take steps to make sure we require a much better system to prevent that from happening. But what everybody put in the existing buildings is what was rolled in and approved by the city for the filtration systems.
And and filtration was a bigger concern for the cultivation facilities. I mean, I I don't know there was a big concern of the odor of marijuana coming from retail marijuana stores, but so I I don't know how to explain if there is a smell of marijuana as you walk by the the marijuana stores, but we could require greater uh you know filtration regarding that as council could also say.
Could I add one comment to this real quick, this is Wally?
Uh let's let's, before we go on, I think I'd like to hear from uh council first.
Okay, that's all I got.
So I have I have a question, if if that's the case, is there and um the requirements would be existing for those grow facilities to not have outside detectable odor? And we've increased the uh ability to filter particulates, is there any way to have that um backwards compliant?
Uh I don't understand what you mean by backwards compliant.
Well, I mean, the places that are emitting a lot of odor now, is there any way to have their stop? Uh would you have their odor control go more?
I I think so. I mean, if there was a retail marijuana store that has um if it's emitting an odor of marijuana, you can smell it from the street, I think that can be addressed. I mean, I I think that can be addressed. We may need to amend the code with respect to retail marijuana stores, but I do think that they're not supposed to have an odor or discernible odor of marijuana um in their condition of use.
Yeah, I mean, and I believe when we wrote, uh we did that in planning and zoning, and we put it in there, the systems that were installed at some point in time, we find, didn't work up to what we thought was good enough that we could require more. I mean, we'd, you'd have to go back and look at what the original deal was, but I could have swore having them places in front of us in planning and zoning, telling them that at some point in time, if what we're requiring now isn't good enough, we may require more.
I was just curious, I mean, 'cause if it's supposed to be part of the plan going forward for consumption clubs, that they should have detectable odor, yet we have other facilities with a detectable odor, which is, you know, a question that would work out. And if if they did, then beyond you, be retroactive, and have the other places be held at the same standard. It would be like, you know, that's all I have.
Okay, I've got several things here I wanna bring to council's attention. Number one, um I'm very concerned that we currently have a cap of no more than twenty. We've already exceeded that, but we have a cap. Now, if we were to allow consumption clubs, it's going to be in our existing um the way, all the rules and regulations. So to me, I think somebody who wanted to challenge our cap could come in and challenge the cap to say we want as many as we can handle, you know, we originally had a whole bunch. So I think there's a liability, a situation that we're faced with there, that's a concern that I have. Um a concern that we're exceeding our capacity of the twenty that we've allowed, which we've already, because we backtracked uh from the original number, we're at like a twenty-six, so we're already over the limit, but that was within uh, you know, those are all uh pretty much already in 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 the in the group that we had allowed. Uh so that's a problem. I'm gonna wait till I'm done. Uh the other thing is, is, you know, I feel that there is some liability for an owner. Uh it's just like a bar owner, they have to have a bouncer. Uh are they going to have to hire a permanent bouncer that's going to be on premises, that is shielded away from the rest of the group being able to monitor in case there are any issues? The biggest thing is, is what benefit is there to the city? Because as we well know, there is only one in Denver, there's one in Colorado Springs. So there's a reason why that there are only one in some of these big metro areas. So my concern is, if I I don't really see that there is a benefit to our community at this point in time by having a consumption club of any type. Um hours of operation are a concern. Uh you've, some people have already touched on the ventilation issues. The other thing is, I think if if this moves forward, every anybody who has a um hosp- or a sup- a consumption club, they will have to install a fire suppressant system. And that's gonna be very costly. Because first of all, if I'm a business owner next to a consumption club, and they have carpet in the room or flammable surfaces, and there are people using, according to the uh uh ordinance that Mr. Downs put forward, where they can use matches, they could use butane lighters, they can use all this other stuff. Uh and something drops, and I have a business next, is my insurance going to go up because of the possibility and the liability that this person has put on me? It's a concern. All flood, I'm I would say that all surfaces must be non-flammable. They'll all have to have ADA compliant bathrooms, his and hers. We've already touched on the separation of retail from the consumption area. Now, the number of patrons that can be allowed in a consumption club? Now, the big question that I have here, and this has been brought up, is the smoke and drive. And uh I looked at some information. And from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and seventeen, the number of marijuana can- or cannabis induced or cannabis deaths, or cannabis deaths due to cannabis use, uh went from eleven point four three percent in twenty thirteen to twenty one point three in twenty seventeen. There were seventy-one deaths in twenty thirteen and a hundred and sixty-two deaths in twenty seventeen, and that's so that's eighteen and nineteen are missing, I don't have that information, I could not find that. So I, the the last thing I wanted to say, I think the fee scale on this is way too low. Uh just like I think our fee scale that we adopted for our marijuana clubs, or our marijuana retail outlets was way too low, 'cause uh places like Pueblo and some of these other areas were charging, what is it, five and ten thousand dollars per licenser, license, to license them? So I think that, you know, the license is way too low. But I, so I think you know my feeling on this, uh just by what I brought forward. So I'm I'm just uh just, I just don't think that there's a benefit to our community at this point in time with uh by having these.
Mayor, if I can reduce this to just a couple of your concerns, I, please don't think, I'm not advocating this. I I just wanna uh say, first of all, regarding the cap, these are a different license type. They're not retail marijuana stores. Our existing cap is on retail marijuana stores. So these um these, if you were to approve, that they are not subject to the existing cap that the city has on um on retail marijuana stores.
Okay, before, before you go on, before I wanna, I wanna have an answer for that, if you, if I may, is I know that's what you're saying. However, uh the citizenry of this community are gonna say, what the holy heck are you guys doing now? You are exceed, they don't understand, and me may have a hard time understanding that. And so we were, you know, we as council people are going to have to do the explaining. But go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor, I think as you guys always do, you can do a very able talking, I know this sounds like I'm advocating, but people get confused on a lot of different things, and I know you guys have to deal with that. They think it's very uh able to deal with confusion that people may have on that, and simply say, you don't need to worry about that, this is a different license type. Look, I I understand if if you decide you don't want them, but I I wanna say too, it is in our ordinance, it is contemplated that the fee structure for these facilities would be the same as other marijuana license applications. And you do have to be careful, you don't wanna impose a fee structure that is um that is excessive. The communities that have a higher fee structure, they have greater services attached, or they'll refer out their planning department, things like that. So our fee structure was rationally related to the application process that we adopted, and that's why um we did what we did, and that would conflict in here. Um regarding liability, I, they do have to take on liability, they understand that, and it is like in other business, uh whether or not it involves marijuana, alcohol, what have you, we all kind of assume that risk. Um but anyway, the other things, I I don't wanna sound like I'm, you know, parsing your your many concerns. I get it, but I did wanna just address those points.
Uh the last thing I wanted to say is, uh you know, I know that you've drawn a random number of, you know, six and six units, and I I I could not agree to even get close to those numbers, uh to agree on those. So that's, and I, like I said, just giving you my my opinions, and opinions that I'm hearing from citizens from the community. Uh I've had multiple calls on this with concerns from the community. Um so that that's what I'm, what I, what I, what my thoughts are. So um at this point in time, uh does anybody else have any comments that you wanna bring forward?
I do, if you don't mind, Mayor. I think that, you know, something, the only reason I think we we should consider these is against the fact the amount of people we have coming to this community, that stop there, grab it, and they go. And like Ms. Gregor said, when you're looking at the people who are coming out of the business fields, they're the ages from fifty to seventy-five, that are going back to smoke a pot like they did in the sixties, that are coming here, if they had a place they could go, they wouldn't come here and buy and leave. They would come here and stay, that have a place to socially gather, and make plans to stick around our community for the weekends, to go hiking and do stuff like that. So our benefits are more than what we're gonna make just off the sales of the marijuana. It's the tax revenue per person, what they figure through the state, through tourism, I don't know what that number is, fifty-eight, seven, whatever the dollar. It's the tax revenue per person, what they figure through the state, through tourism, I don't know what that number is, fifty-eight cents, whatever the dollar is per person. If we keep an extra ten thousand people in this town at those kind of numbers, then we're starting to look at some serious tax revenue that could be brought brought into this community. And I think that's why we should be considering it, is giving people a reason to stay in our community and take advantage of all the things we have to offer. And I would never get behind the kind of numbers that less do in there just as a number to throw out. I would never, I don't believe we should get behind a number of more than a couple of places to see how they're gonna work and look at some good business plans that we can get behind that we think will work for what we're wanting to do. We get to set the rules and we can make these as stringent. We can require that they have somebody that is in there to monitor no one sneaking pot in, to make sure people are only smoking the half a gram or one gram that's under the places that sell. That all the rules are being followed, very stringent uh air, air systems in there to protect our police or um emergency responders if they have to go in. We can set all these rules. We need to, this is a means to keep the tourism up and I think that is a main focus we should be looking at, is to keep the most people in this town for more than an hour they're here to hit our pot shops and leave, um stick around a weekend and spend their money, spend hundreds of dollars elsewhere than just the marijuana schools. That's all I have.
Okay, I I want I wanted to uh comment a little bit. There's something that we need to consider. You know, we have some really, you know, we have marijuana, which is what we have, provided us some good revenue. Uh we're also developing, you know, our Space Creed project, which is a different group of people. But then we also have the uh Fisher's Peak, which is gonna bring in a tremendous amount of people. And there may be some that will smoke marijuana. But how many of those would maybe shy away because we do have consumption clubs and we we also have all this marijuana and all this stuff, so I I that that causes me some some concern, some heartburn, because what are we trying to build as a community? Are we trying to build a community that is open to marijuana and drugs, uh which we know that that's a whole different issue? Are we trying to establish a good, clean environment for a fam- for fam- to to, for families to be able to come in? Uh so that's, that's a concern that I have.
May I say something?
Sure.
Um I I don't know which one uh mentioned, which councilperson mentioned about the the event of the pot shops on the police department, but I remember early on when I was first appointed the city council, uh elected the city council. Uh the police department made it very clear that they had no problem, I mean, uh with the the pot, pot industry here in town. And I think we're we're stereotyping people that consume marijuana. It's um I I liken this to the prohibition years. You know, we don't have to consume it, but why are we denying somebody that wants to, denying them the right to use it? That's no right.
Sure.
It's legal in the state of Colorado. And I I think for the same things there, as you just mentioned, the space to create at Fisher's Peak, I think it's a generational thing. You don't see young kids drinking anymore. And I'm not, I'm not I'm not wanting kids to run there and get stolen and get drunk. But what I'm saying is what what we used to do for recreation is not what they're doing now. And I think it would be foolish to consider it. That's all.
Okay, uh Les, do you wanna get me to get the, just a consensus from each councilperson to see if they wanna move forward with the draft order, with the ordinance?
I think Aaron, Ms. Obeltry may even have another comment.
Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Obeltry.
I I would just say that I I agree with um Councilwoman Goodall and Councilwoman Grego. I think what it does for our community is that um we have a chance to do it right. We have a chance to do it with the limitations that we feel we would be comfortable with. But we're already known for marijuana. There's no turning back that 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 ship sail. That is what people come here for. And I think that it is short sighted to not think, why would we not make this into a place that people know that they could come and do it safely, do it legally, um and do it within the restraints that we want in our community. To me, that makes, that makes logical sense. And the part about, um, you know, I I think we we have to be uh grownups about the fact that people use marijuana, people use alcohol, and they use those two things uh for good reasons and for bad reasons. Um but that's not really our our um, our place to judge. I think if we put the requirements on that would make us feel comfortable with it, then I think we could do it right and we could show how it can be done to the rest of the state and frankly to the nation, because people are looking to us to take leadership in this area.
Okay, you know, we have a responsibility to our citizens. We need to listen to our citizens as well, and I've listened to several. And uh be honest with you, I got a call today and I don't know how many there are, but there is a petition being circulated uh for us or to us. I I'm not sure at some point. Uh so that's a, that's another, so.
I'm aware of that. I I have heard of that.
So I.
I'm aware of that. I I think that those, the concerns that they, that the people have in that petition should certainly be addressed. Um it's not, not good either for the man.
Okay, uh Mr. Downs, uh you know, my question earlier?
Yes, Mayor, I I would ask uh in general terms if uh council members are inclined to go forward with this ordinance and at first reading or inclined to say no, to tell the the uh draft ordinance to go forward if, if we could, please.
Okay, starting with Mr. Goodall.
I'm a yes.
Ms. Obeltry?
Yes, with some N's.
Yes.
Okay, uh Ms. Grego?
Yes.
Mr. De Bonham?
No.
Mr. Shu?
No.
Mr. Williamson?
It's it's a long discussion for me, but I'm 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 erring towards no.
Okay. And you know my position at this point in time, which is a no?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh other than, uh are there any other discussion, agenda items? I know that uh, Mr. Williamson, you brought something up some time back and of course, uh I think uh Mr. Valentine is looking at it. And uh has any, has council, anybody in council, have, you guys had any other uh agenda items that you would like to bring forward at some point in time? Mr. Goodall?
Nothing.
Okay, Ms. Obeltry?
I I think uh we got a long list of them the last time we met. I think we're still working on.
Okay. It's just nothing new. Ms. Grego?
No, I have nothing.
Okay, Mr. De Bonham?
No sir, Mr. Man.
Mr. Shu?
No.
Mr. Williamson?
Uh no, no, this time.
Okay. And I don't have any, like I said, there's a a laundry list that we have that we're working on now, so. Anyway, I know it's been a a long night, people, but uh some really good and frank discussion, which is what we were ele- we were elected to do, and I appreciate everybody's comments. Thank you and good night.
Good night, everybody. Good night.